I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go, the motion goes up to the agenda. No additions or any deletions?
I would suggest even special meetings technically have a public comment period, so I would suggest that you guys ask for the comment period even though there's before you start your business.
Yeah, probably before.
Yeah.
I think most probably with the addition of public comment between this and your business.
I'll second.
Motion being third, go ahead, favor. Okay, do we have any public comment? Anything done? We'll move down to new business, the North End Water Extension Breakdown Pricing. Is this the 700, is that the total on it, or is it?
That is the total of water and sewer, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
For the proposed extension of Pacific Pine. The gas station.
That's an estimate.
Right.
That's what the loan, the loan values were based off. We have, we have not received the final contract yet, we have got approval for the loan. There was a $45,000 grant they put in, you'll see that down there. About three inches above the bottom of the page, under toilet sewer, we have a grant worth $45,000. That changed, the estimate has dropped down to 700,800.
Who's that grant group?
Excuse me?
Who's the grant group?
I am. It's one of those that's based on jobs, so there has to be certain periods of jobs, but with the current, am I correct, Darryl, with the current customers they have, that should be no problem to me because of the...
No, that was pretty much...
Or is that just pure grant?
That's pure grant. They don't have to do anything with the number of jobs, mostly Precision Pine. Not Precision Pine, Pacific Pine, Pacific Pine and used to be Pro Light, I am.
Okay. Seems like every, every bid that comes out, there's always something changes in there. Do you anticipate any major changes as far as price going up or anything like that?
Darryl, do you think the contingency covers what could be a higher bid then?
I don't know, once it goes out for bid, I don't have control over it anymore. These are prices we see in all the other projects, so... You know, there's a, if we look at the... If we have the connection fees, we're gonna charge the connection fees to the connection when the people hook up. That was discussed with the players. When we had that, when's that been? Nine months ago now, probably? So, we need to make sure that they pay that portion of the connection fee. That's how we have it set up, because I don't, wasn't planning on those being an out-of-pocket for the town. See that Larson stops, I am raise, Purdue's, USDA, which is basically Larson, myself. Now, there's a few other people that are interested in connecting up. Jeff mentioned one today, maybe some more.
That's what I was wondering, how much, are you gonna go on beyond the gas station? Just in case?
We're planning on, it ends right at the upper right-hand corner, where you see the industrial way takes off of Highway 395.
Right.
Right there. Basically goes down to the office board, used to be Cornerstone.
Hey, Cornerstone gonna hook up?
And the last word I have, they were gonna hook up, but they're new owners. I couldn't get ahold of Bobby today, I called Bobby, he didn't hear anything.
Okay.
And I didn't get ahold of her today. I have, I have the consents ready to go, for people ready to sign. So, soon as we get those distributed and we should be ready to go and get the contract back from my F A when we all sign it. I don't think we should put anything out to bid until we get that back. But, once we have that back, we can go to bid. We're, we're planning, there's very little of it on the highway right away. You see in the lower left-hand corner where we start past the cemetery. You know, we're working on easements from I am raise, from Larson, which is basically all of it. There's a little bit there, work across his old Max's garage. So, we, we think that's gonna be an easement, he was open to it, but we need to get the paperwork to everybody on there. So, that keeps us out of the highway right away. The highway right away's got fire pools on it, as you know, it's also got fire hydrants and everything else, so we're just gonna keep it off the highway right away. The only place we'll be on the right way is down in the lower left as we go right to the cemetery. We'll bore across the highway for all the service connections to stop my office, Purdue's, those homes there, which everyone's kind of in the middle of the agreement to cut to. So, I think we're ready to go. The annexation, property taxes, we'll receive it on the backside of that sheet.
Can I ask a question? If we started construction this month of October, would it, would it be better to start now or in the spring?
Well, this project was pretty much driven by Greg Larson and Pacific Pine Products, and he needs to go back. So, I would...
Say right now?
I would say we start it right now.
Okay, does this, whether...
He's, he's built a new building, he's building another building. He needs the sprinkler system, so...
And there's nothing about this project that going into the winter is gonna affect, correct, because this is just buried pipe and stuff like that, so we're not talking concrete work or anything where it's gonna be...
No, the water will affect compaction.
Right.
It'll compact the mud.
Stab, Stabs needed, needed pretty bad too. They're having sewer problems over there.
Okay, so two dates, for sure Larson has said yes, Stabs has said yes. We have five people listed here, but which, which are actually already signed something.
Nobody's signed.
Nobody's signed, but I have them ready here to go.
The only question mark we have is the new owner, Cornerstone, although it was our understanding that supposed to, so yeah.
They're the biggest one on the page.
They are.
So, this, the sheet that was presented today is much different than the one that was being outlined, with...
Yeah.
It's per year at 3.5%.
Yeah.
I changed the interest rate. The interest rate, if you notice on that new one, is 2.14%. And they also changed the term, they changed the term to 25 years instead of 30. So, that affected the payments, even though the interest rate went down, it chopped another five years.
So, breaking down this sheet, the loan payment itself, estimated would be more $24,000 and change, is that right? Because of the connection fees that they're gonna pay upfront?
Right. Because the loan payment, the loan payment is not pre this connection fee.
Which is this? Service connections line right here.
Right. Which is a significant amount.
So long as we get them all. And then, and then we're, we're estimated taxes would be around four, four and change more a year. So, then, besides water rates and all that collection, we'd still be...
We'd still be ahead worth...
Ahead.
Probably five, six thousand.
At least one more customer that said he was definitely interested and signed up immediately, probably making a package of about $1,500 a year.
Really won't take that much to connect that one, and the taxes on the other side. Good. Anybody have anything else on this one? This is pretty standard, I mean, what, what we've done in the past with extending lines, I mean, it's, it's probably been a while, other than Red Rock, Red Rock was, you know, installed in a similar way, however, they're paying everything, and that's outside of the tax that we recover. So, the struggle I have with this is that, you know, Red Rock's paying all that, that loan payment, whereas this is coming in future taxes, so, you know, for 25 years, we won't see that tax really, other than the, you know, small amount each, each month, above water loan payments gonna be. So...
You'll see that plus the service fees.
Yeah, service fees, which are really, I mean, we're gonna see Red Rock's service fees anyways as well, and that's totally separate, separate charge, which really just covers our, you know, manpower and, you know, the actual cost to do business and that part of everything and stuff. And, and where, I guess I'm, I'm still, you know, struggled with this is that, you know, you'd be coming into the town, you get the tax revenue, but it, it's not a complete wash, but it's near a wash. And if we have any, anything come, come up, or anybody doesn't sign in, then these numbers can, you know, be changed, and we could actually be losing money.
Or the actual bid came at considerably higher.
Yeah, and, I mean, which is very likely. And then we talked, you know, last meeting, we talked about wanting to potentially go with water down Industrial Way out to Duesenberry to, so that we don't have a dead end, which is certainly gonna cost us, and there's no potential users down there, so that, you know, paying for that is a significant cost to us if we would do that. And I understand the reason to do it, which makes a lot of sense. Sort of like the 25 compared to, you know, 30 and the interest rate.
Well, I think we need to get all the consents signed before we send this out on the street.
And we, we, I, I think you did mention in a previous meeting that you talked to other landowners, and they're like, no, they don't want to, it's, you know, this, this is kind of gonna make our map similar to what Red Rock is, is a little cherry stem for some of these businesses, which is, it's fine, because we, we want the industrial, you know, but, but to me, it's a different situation. If we're just using their tax money to pay off a service we're now granting to them, I mean, yeah, they're gonna pay it, they won't have their costs for wells, or subjects on that, or whatever the case may be. So, we're helping them out there, which is a good thing.
Well, we discussed it.
They will also.
Probably sometime though. I guess it comes down to... You're, you're correct, we generally have a plan as well. But you also gotta look at, you know, the growth side of it too. You know, if we're gonna grow any of that area out there, we better have the services there to do it. You know, for the businesses that are there to expand and to bring in new business in, and to me, if I was looking at Lakeview to bring a business in, I would look at that area more than I would industrial area because of the South End of Town.
So, I mean, vacant lots, right? I mean, so what vacant lots are we seeing?
Vainored lots are, lots are businesses that will be sold and improved on. There's a lot of room for Stabs to improve in terms of what Stabs and what it is, with... Emery will probably expand from what I'm hearing as much as they possibly can, if they have, and they've got some vacant land on the other side of them. So, and then Larson's already is, already, so there's definitely room for, for expansion. And if we're that far out, there's a lot of vacant property just, just beyond that that would be hard to connect to.
I will also throw one other thing that I've been hearing with a lot of my C L P's related to these kind of loans, these sources are trying out, these low interest rates and stuff like that, especially as things are getting bad, some of this rates available, this money, that free money, it's not free money, but folks like this interest rate it is, some of these sources are not gonna be available in a year or two because of budget tightening and things of that nature, so that's your, the borrowing rates could be substantially higher in a year. But again, you guys have to be comfortable extending the, I mean, like I said, it, it is a, there is, I said, it isn't a future investment type thing.
The new buildings, that Larson's building, I bet or not on his assessed value hasn't now.
They are not.
Another $20,000 square feet building.
Which is going back here.
That's correct. Those, I don't think, I don't think those get added to the tax rolls until they're complete.
This building may not be on the tax rolls.
It's not completely restored.
Right.
And that's probably not on the tax roll.
And again, as you were saying, any future expansion by the, the new Pro Light process or the town would be picking that up for a thousand as that expands. Plus, you also have other users that are gonna help you spread out that cost of the main water rate you're proposing, because all, that, that water rate will apply across all of our users, so these are further, you know, if they're using more water, they're carrying more of the burden for that water cost to supply.
Yeah, so they're gonna pay a fee now, and then they're gonna get a rate bounce from the, a bunch of rates for, and even plant from that. So, they're gonna kind of be a good...
Right. But it will also maybe help you guys amortize that rate, spread it out further amongst with more users and with more, you know, because that, that will get factored into the USDA study for how you set your rate, that it may have some, that may help maybe not have it raised as much because you've got, you know, certain volumes.
Since we're going here, how, how is Emery's getting it, are they...
It was going down Industrial, it was going down Industrial Way to their office.
Down here.
And then Stabs.
Could have been north of there.
See the black line?
Yeah. So, just here?
Yes, to there.
And so, so our actual through a line that would be our, our area, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the water would terminate right there.
And that's why continuing on just... So, when I was under their first assumption that it was stopping here, that's not that much further, I mean, it's still gonna definitely have, still have to get them out. I originally thought it was more like 50%, and it's more like 25 or 30s now.
Yeah, you gotta turn the corner there on Duesenberry and go to the right some too, because it's, it's...
Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't just...
No, you gotta go up, about where you're, about where that second white dot is, there you go.
Right there. Sorry, I said that stuff.
Although that's pretty cheap construction through there, but...
Sure. Yeah, cheaper, yeah, cheaper.
It does have a significant amount.
Well, I mean, I think it should be safe to say without at least $200,000 probably.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
At least.
Is that fact, is that, is that not backward into this one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It is not.
So...
With no user.
Yeah, folks, that, so just to make sure you understand, that is not, it dead ends at, that, that, that proposed expansion is not part of this.
Right, right, I, I know. Just gonna dead end right there at, right there.
I believe right from my, I don't have ours on the right, no, this is, this is all residential here, it does, it is commercial out there, till I get to the solar, or is it not commercial industrial?
Right.
Now, when you, when you say it's gonna end right there, but the line's still gonna go on outward and circulate around through, or?
It'll be a dead end, don't stop right there.
You know, we talked about this for Red Rock to bring it back around, if we're, by leaving it a dead end, that's where everything gathers up.
Yeah, but it's another probably, probably closer at 350,000 to go the rest of where the high end is. You know, there's different options, we can connect it down the highways and the Mormon church too. It's a little bit more complicated, a little more complicated, but that would, that would...
But that would put them at the end of the line, wouldn't it?
No. No, they're, they're fed from whole more terrains. It doesn't, it doesn't have any issues with keeping the prison, if we had an issue with the line, but...
So, I guess not all these are on wells right now. Up, up the ways.
Yeah, just Stabs right at the Mormon church coming from the north.
I, I thought we're on a well out there.
You have a well, but there is city water there.
Yeah.
They use it for their sprinkler system. You guys use the well inside the turtle.
Would whoever really pay that bill?
I guess, I guess the goal was to service those industries without, without any out-of-pocket costs. That's... Yeah, that's always the goal, expanding just from that out-of-pocket cost.
Are there, are there gonna be something on, on, at the end of that line?
Fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant, so you can flush it through the... And I see on here you've only got three hydrants? That gonna be enough for that one?
Self out right, yeah.
Is it? Okay. Anybody have any more questions?
Okay.
All right. So, what, what change are we talking about right now? Doing from what we've already discussed, which is looking at the loans and looking at moving forward pending, I mean, nothing we've, I mean, we've had this on our agenda a couple of other times, and I just wonder what, have we actually agreed to so far? Other than, I mean, because I'm assuming you, you've already got some, you know, engineering costs and stuff into this and...
Correct, we do.
Right.
That, that we can, that we can apply to the loan funds.
Right.
Because we got, we got approval to do that ahead of loan approval. So, those would be, those would be reimbursable for the loan funds. The only thing that's different than when we've talked is the estimates differ because of the term, interest rate, and that grant.
So, no real consequence? And even more because of interest only five or six years. So, just, just speaking, I would, when we enter into the loan, I would hope that we can get it paid off sooner, obviously. A loan payment will be as is, but I would, I would recommend to this group that we would put any of the extra kind of price for the loan to get paid off sooner, so we can actually get the benefit of, of that tax a lot sooner and...
You're talking about the extra five or $6,000 in the...
Yeah, take that at the end of the year, look at the maintenance and what we got left over.
And then any other users that come on, their, their tax directly applies to, to the loan as well.
Like a system developer.
So, well, so if we can just get this, I mean, 25 years hanging the next council after us, 25 years of debt out there, I don't know, I don't like doing, I mean, I don't like debt, so I wish we would do that, so I'm just saying that, that's what I would suggest, that we take any extra money, I don't want to be absorbed in the cost of doing business in town, you know, which is our general function budget, I'd like it to. Well, I, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I, but I would, I don't think I'd throw it all out there, I would keep some just in case something, you need something to, if something's wrong, it's gotta be fixed and... And I, I get that, and I think hopefully there's something that gets fixed would be coming out of the service charges that we're taking, which is where something that needs to fix should come.
I mean, we can go back to the users too, if, you know, we have...
Well, that's, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, yeah, we're trying to make this cost effective for them, which is zero cost, but at the end of the day, one user is usually gonna pay, just like Red Rock, they're paying for that, not, not anybody else, I mean, I, I want our businesses to succeed, absolutely, all of us do, I mean, so, you know, them getting their service for 25 years of their tax payment seems, who wouldn't want to sign up for that? I mean, it's a... Yeah. You know, you're getting a free thing, you're not gonna have to work on the well, not gonna have to work on your stuff, they abandoned those things. I think it's, it's a huge benefit to those that want to jump onto this, so, I just don't want to put the town in the situation where for 25 years, you know, we got debt out there that should, could have been, maybe should have been, potential tax revenue to then actually give us other services.
Darryl...
That's more area for our police to cover, safety, you know, the speed limit may change, so that, it does extend things.
Darryl, if, if they do the extra payment like Darrell was talking about, that's gonna cut probably, what, 10, 15 years off the loan, because that's almost a quarter of the, so if you guys did that, you're, you're basically kicking this loan to a 10 or 15-year repayment, so that would get it, and that's similar to what Red Rock's do, Red Rock's on a 10-year.
Yeah, kind of same thing, so plus it's only 2% money too, I mean...
I, I would throw out there that there is an active placement you guys are gonna look at, that the value of money in the future is gonna be less than, including debt, so that's another.
Putting debt, I want to talk to the users, there are basically three major players driving the whole thing, right here, so Stabs and Larson need to agree that.
And there's need, if we want to do this, what, what kind of estimate cost is that? I mean, if that's, you know, 30, 50, 100,000, I mean, we don't know, right?
So, I really don't know what, I really don't know what Larson's options would be for those kind of fire flows. It's gonna be tough, they're pumping their sewage now. Stabs, Stabs has well problems, we have well problems in connection with Stabs, they don't use a lot of water, it'd be nice to get it fixed. Stabs has sewer problems, Purdue Construction has very little water.
And you can't use a well on...
Barely, barely.
Fire, it's really consistent either.
And they're wanting to expand their job.
Yeah, they're gonna build for next year, that's what I, I was wondering about.
That's gonna help the town. I see Stabs has moved toward the toilets again, so that tells me he's having trouble with the set, and, and the water to run their food prep and the stations, so, putting debt, we'll talk to them some more, about some more costs.
But we also don't want to jeopardize losing our loan to 2.1%.
No, there's a lot of jobs out there, a lot. Because every time I was, he was putting on another 15 or so, he certified to get that $45,000 grant. I, I don't know, what happened with me, I, I did put them all together and sent them over to Benny, because she was working on those USDA funds for this, through the stimulus, and I can't tell you where that's at. I have not an update.
I mean, we're already seeing growth out there before one of you goes on, because I sense that a couple of years. I'm starting off on my building for that. Okay, you have anything else now? No, I mean, you're gonna give us another update, I guess, the next step is trying to get for sure commitments out of folks, and then...
Yeah, once we get all these signed, I'm talking to Jeff Headland for his review, and then we'll get them all signed. Get them to Jeff Headland for his review and then we'll get them all signed.
I know for, for, for taxing purposes, I mean, I don't think we're in. I mean, we're up against the deadline to even get people annexed this year, and I, I know last thing you talked about next year, annexing people, um.
Annexation wouldn't be, it wouldn't start until the next tax year at this point, and if you don't get it in before March of next year, then you miss another. So March is the deadline for the upcoming tax.
And so our payment's gonna start, and then we'll have to work that into the budget, because a lot of payment that's already come and due.
So we need to get it annexed, we need to get it annexed by.
Before March?
But even March, it won't become what, effective until the next January, which is, means we won't get a tax payment for at least twen- till twenty twenty-two. So we'll have a whole.
Correct.
Two years roughly of no tax coming, then we'll have.
As soon as, really good to our users.
So we'll have fifty thousand dollars in first year of payments that we have to make.
That, we can ask them that.
We can do it to our users.
Yeah, so, so just, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you said that, because that, that's something we need to consider, cause if not, we gotta figure out.
About two years, yeah.
Yeah. Like, it would really be two full years.
We don't make name of the head up, cause we're gonna be done pretty quickly.
So what we need to do is go to the users and they need to make up another fifty grand basically.
What if they can't?
We're going down on the dollars.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Yeah, that's right, they write sticker on everything on there. And I'll just have to figure it out. We, we have to figure it out, I mean. I think it's a great project and, and. I think we all think that, we just wanna make sure that it's the right thing for the town.
It's basically a win-win situation.
So would that, you know.
And it's the right thing financially for us.
Would you think that fifty thousand extra dollars would come out of utilities, understand or?
No, they're coming from our users.
If we don't get the users to pay it, it would, it would have to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's, that's.
We have to figure that in our next budget, but hopefully they'll come up with a full fifty or at least a good two hundred fifty thousand.
Could that be laid out over several years?
It has to be done over two years.
Two years, yeah.
Cause then we gotta make that payment.
Yeah, it could be done over two years for them.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be the first year.
Right.
Yeah, it could be over two years, because, and we're not, you know, we're not trying to gals them, we're just trying to be able to make that payment for two years to the tax money.
Right.
You know, cause the, the, the whole key to this is do this project with little, with no out of pocket expense, cause they want to own the job. So yeah, they can spread out with that other fifty thousand, however it's broke out between the users, um, spread it out over two years. And Daryl, you're a user out there, how do you feel about it? Cause it's gonna directly affect you too.
Yeah, it is, um. I don't know. I, I would assume it's gonna make the property more valuable, that's the way I look at it.
It'll make that whole area more valuable, I think.
We'll have water, we'll have sewer, so it'll make the property more valuable.
It will, yeah, it'll help grow out there.
And you've got your south side, yeah.
There's next to that one too. There's a couple buildable lots in between those homes.
Good.
So.
Your roof for growth out there.
What about Kim's house that's right up above you?
Well, Stab owns that.
Oh.
Stab owns it, Stab owns everything around there.
Oh, yeah, I thought Kim owned the house, I'm sorry.
You could've said the little island, right, I realized.
I didn't think I was in a very good place to complain. Whatever happened.
Okay, so yeah, let's see if we can get those, those guys over the next two years and make that fifty thousand, and then that way we will be truly doing this with no out of pocket expense.
Does that need to be included in their consent?
I, I think, I think we ought to approach it two ways, we just talk to them about it, be the one, and then the other thing is we may be able to do it in a hookup fee. If we did it that way, it might be a little clearer.
Yes.
Then we have to, but then it could be over.
So, I have a question. The hookup fees that he's talking about are really far different from the hookup fees.
Yes.
That we have, so that'll be included all in their paperwork, and then they'll pay you for it, or do they pay us for it?
Yeah, they'll pay you, they'll pay the town.
Okay.
That's gonna be like, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a chunk.
All right, let's, let's move on.
It's called business, they're working, so it's really well, yeah.
Yeah, the next one is the always preceding station change order. You have some kind of diagram or something that explains why it's another fifty-six thousand dollars more?
Fifty percent on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we do. Uh, there's a couple things out there that changed. Number one, we. We added a door, it doesn't sound much, but it, it won't be in a fenced compound anymore, so we added the door. We added the, there's a lift station there with the bad roof, so we connected it to the existing lift station and we're covering the existing roof of that old building. So those are two things that were different. The site work is a little bit more expensive, we've got some more fill in there next to the living night, um, that's a fill in. Uh, there's some existing structures there we had to work around, uh, in-ground structures, so we couldn't get the, the poles in, you know, the old building. That goes down at the other side. Actually, I was. I, I thought the cost was gonna come higher. This is the southeast corner of the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Their south line, Stock Drive. So. We're gonna have to work in on Stock Drive and then where the fence, that's all right. Here's that existing lift station building, we're extending the lift over, under the lift for that. This block is an existing in-ground old manhole structure. There's an existing, um, vault, manhole structure here. So this actually is gonna set up a foundation, in front of it will be supportive holes. And we've gotta raise this area up to match, um. But then you can also match the grades of these.
I have to, I have to, of the, of the.
The S Street location was very batty, you know, just important.
Now, they're gonna come in from this direction?
Correct.
And then, now they're gonna have room here to turn around and back here?
They'll back in, here's the dump site.
Oh, okay.
So they're, so, I mean, we don't have turn. Signals or anything like, I mean, turn lanes or something like. It's too bad they're not coming in here, we're gonna need them all back there.
But I think there's gonna be enough room for them to come in and pour like this and back in.
But it would be maybe nicer if we could figure that out, because I know, I mean, I know. People on verge of complaining about, you know, just flying down ninth, right, even to the tracks going way past posted speed limits. I, I just don't want any traffic issues anymore going right here and that, but. So.
But a lot of cost, they got, you know, they got sixty feet.
Mm-hmm.
So we got plenty of space.
That's, that's warm enough, actually.
It's all pretty consistent, it's way more than enough. Let's turn in the.
People, people want forty, fifty mile view right along with the. To, to turn, you know, surprising people, you know, come up on icy conditions, somebody's trying to turn in.
Most situations.
Oh my gosh. So most of it's because of, I mean, it's not site ready, right? I mean, I love that, cause.
Company's not, it's not site ready.
Yeah, and it's, it's so much lower, you're talking about a ton of fill and.
And working around.
The change order, then, one of your, might be the great detail on.
They did, that's why I was.
Cop, yeah, cost of wire, this was so much more than, um.
That makes more sense now though.
So, I mean, and there's a drainage, right, on that north side, north of ninth, and then we're gonna probably do a cove with that.
Yeah.
For a lane, sorry, or something.
Yeah, the covert is in there, you know, although Adam's not putting that in on his contract.
Who's doing that?
Uh, the cooling water contractor, Morello. Cause their digging are on the right away, they didn't wanna coordinate, they're digging it too different.
No, that's a human eye.
So looking at our other factors here, and I'm not trying to mix two things, but Morello's going down that, that same north side of ninth.
Right.
And then connecting back to M Street and down.
Yeah, I need a map, it's kind of old. I thought they had mine, it's on it, so. It shows the, the water system and, um.
Mm-hmm.
To let them see it.
So, Morello's gonna come down, uh, Roberta, oh, north side of ninth and then down M Street.
Right. Right.
And same way back.
They don't go on Roberta, it starts.
That'll be a hard problem.
Yeah, well, it starts, yeah, okay. Well, there's, there's some things going on with Roberta.
Yeah, the coors, they come back.
So, yeah, probably that pond was there, but that didn't mean Morello's contract. Or.
That's my question. Yeah, I'm recording. No, I'm recording. So, um, I, I just need to know if the council, uh, wants to sign for the, the change order? And.
Oh, there it is, we put it, it's there.
You're welcome.
The comments is. It sure is. So ultimately, this did the, I mean, their whole project was coming out of reserves, is that right?
Coming out of sewer.
And then because of our increased fee, the schedule that's already been adopted or will be adopted? We talked about that before, where, uh, it may take five to ten years or something in the, the dump fee that, that go there. Pay this off, but now it's maybe ten or fifteen years now, I believe?
Well, we, I haven't seen, we haven't set a fee yet.
Right.
How's, how's the fee set? Was that set by order?
Yeah, most of the generals are, but I, I haven't, I've never seen the fee.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is.
It's not very much.
And it hasn't been raised in years, so it's, and this is being mandated to keep our certification, so the users that are using it, you can be paying for what they have to do. So that's just, that's the.
And we're not abandoning, but we're stopping the site of South and, or South S and, and third, South Third, so. That potentially, we can reuse for something else now.
But we use it for Stock Drive. So we kinda have no choice in this, cause it's part of our DQ and that. If, if we had started off in this location, this would be the same project, I mean, it has nothing to do with the S Three project, it's.
So I guess, what's your ask for the consensus for us to, on this change order there?
I'm, I'm asking for it.
Basically, they're asking for council approval, so that the mayor or, the motion needs to be that the mayor or Michelle is authorized to. Execute this if the council wants to do it.
And, and the new location, the surrounding members, owners have been notified?
There aren't any note, there, that's the whole reason.
There's none, it's on Stock Drive, there's no.
How far down is this?
There's other owners, just.
It's right.
So this is line. Keep north.
It's south right over here.
Really just cramming in the, um, protect across the.
Yep. Yeah, this is right on the edge of the sewer lagoon, right there, you know, I, you're kind of.
That's Red Rock right there. So where Ninth Street runs into Stock Drive? Yeah, which is next to, uh, Front, right?
Yeah.
It's past there, so it's past there further than.
Yep.
Okay, well, I was just thinking of this, that railroad area, it's not in what?
It's on Kellam's front.
Well, there's other people I know over there, that's why I'm asking, cause I, I would imagine they would probably have.
It's a quarter mile, it's a quarter mile of track.
So can you keep, you wanna look at the, uh.
Well.
West, west.
Okay, that makes sense.
Nikki?
Yeah.
Do you wanna look right through Third Street?
Yeah.
And this is where.
There is, okay, so it's probably, yeah. Oh, that makes way more sense, yeah.
You can't get a post for the sewer problem after you.
The nearest road to Nikki's South B Street, I see.
So. I'm, I'm assuming there's some kind of luck statement that you signed on the M and Third Street.
Did that help you?
Yeah.
Land use compatibility statement that Janine probably signed on the thirty and South, um, South Street.
It was already unapproved.
So in this case, are we saying that she'll probably sign that on existing use?
That's a good, that's.
Cause if not, then she's gonna.
That's a good question, dude.
We have to notice, and it's not zoned.
Did I have a lux?
It's not zoned, you know, for this year, it's a residential zone, suffice me.
Is it? That, that should be.
I know what it should be, but it's zone residential, our sewer bonds are zone residential.
It's all, all possible. It was supposed.
It was part of the docs.
Yeah.
Haven't helped the first time.
The revised plans went into review to DQ. They should have sent the lux with it, we probably did, but if we haven't, Janine needs to sign.
Yeah.
Cause it's, that's definitely.
I would, I would.
It's already the city mission.
It's the existing use, you know, so I, I don't think it, I don't think we need it, but I just was wondering if that's.
I don't know, that's a big question, we better check. We always send.
Well, it's the same argument, it's the same argument that those on South Third and S have, is that, oh, we didn't want this to use going here, it's a new use, you know, even though. Historically, we'd used that area. Kremlins would have an argument, I would think, to have that go in as well, next to them, um, protect the crossroad, kind of, could too, I guess, but, um.
Oh, right.
This will be.
No, I know, I'm not, I'm not saying.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna deal with it, even if we deal with the issue, we deal with them, we just get, have to find another place, but I think we probably have to go through the process of. Approval for that to the town, so, for the planning department.
Hopefully it'll be fine.
So there's a, a couple of things, first I need to know if we are okay signing this. And then, um, Albertson's Construction is asking for a, a amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars. For, uh, materials. And we have already, the town has already paid thirty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and ten cents to Albertson. For the grate.
And the whole screen plan.
Oh, so he's asking for an additional fifty-seven hundred?
He didn't send in a pay request to us, I didn't see that. That came from your office. Came from our office?
Yeah, for, um, on the twenty-second of September.
Well, he didn't let me work it out, I guess.
Here you go, you proved it.
He just signed a little one. And wrote his name.
I mean, they answered all of them. So I just wanna make sure that we're okay, uh.
Well, there's, there's materials onsite, it's covered under the, there's a thing on the general conditions on the contract. We pay for, neither's responsible, they get stolen or beat up or something, he has to have insurance on him, so.
Is there materials onsite?
Uh, we have the, we have the stream that the, the truck's up into, and we probably. We're opening up a little more advice and material, so we can get started on it, so. I, I think kind of the contract, we can pay. It's just his responsibility to protect it, you know, if he's broken, it's not hard, it's not a problem.
So, just looking at this area, I mean, we're, we're, we're not about building up significantly in this area, right?
Right, to the top of that wall.
Uh, to the top of the wall, roughly. I, I drove by this the other day and, uh, this builds, this area seems so much smaller than the S Street.
It is.
Location, and it's.
It's pretty tight, yeah.
What's, what's on this side, who owns that, where the bush is?
Kremlin.
Oh.
Well, we own the.
So we can't go any further.
We have the crack, so we have sixty feet roughly from that retaining wall. We have the creek, so we have sixty feet roughly from that retaining wall across the creek to the other side of the tree, the bush.
Okay.
So we do not, so it doesn't generate a budget.
Cause there's plenty of streets also.
Residential.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. We would have a street before it.
And this isn't in a flood zone?
Uh, yeah, it is.
And that's not gonna cause any issues?
Well, it's probably a reason for you.
Yeah, well, it's not, even that.
Uh, it's gotta be ready for the drop, probably, for, given the problem. Is that part of why we gotta raise it up?
Well, in the massive wall. We really put those walls in.
Yeah, cause it drops down off the road.
And that little dike, when the creek would overflow, run, run into that pump station building. That's why those retaining walls are there. So eliminate that problem.
Hopefully, I mean, coming out of your time, so you're.
Yeah, we have to have.
Yeah, I think we gotta.
But is there any point in approving this if we haven't gotten the planning department to sign up yet?
Like, it's.
Or are we shooting, you know, a check for supplies that we can't return? Potentially, if we will get a sign up.
Well, e- either way, it's gotta be built, one way or another.
Somewhere, yeah.
So the supplies are gonna be used along the way. Whether it's up there or down there, it's still gonna be built, keeping food. If we're not, then I can't, you know, eat the food and we have no place to park all the goods.
But it's, it's gonna be worth, if we're gonna run into problems where different supplies have to be purchased or.
I don't.
Okay.
It wouldn't have been cheaper if we went on some of our stuff, say, west of where Red Rocks gonna go. We're looking about the same. Not Red Rocks, their plant site, but the.
Cooling site.
Cooling new pond. Somewhere out there. Not a stoppage.
We don't, we don't have any. We don't have any place there to get into the system. And get it back into the primary pond.
The primary pond is straight north of this building here.
It's the north, then it comes to this, then it goes across.
Yeah. So we don't really have any place to, to dump over there, by the path.
Right.
We need to dump it where we can already have a bike.
So if you're less than on it and, and obviously, you know, we've got, caught a tough situation, I mean.
The, the land use thing of this, I, I hadn't thought about.
Yeah, I think it'd be okay. I just wanted to bring it up because it is something.
We have a totally different sign customer.
I, I think that just when we look at our fee, fee schedule, we need to try to, you know. Are we only talking about those pumping septic tanks?
This is only for septic tank pumping trucks and two pumps, yeah. So this can, a hundred percent be paid for by two customers. Fast on their customer.
And the, and the odd septic pumper that comes through, because there are a few correct jet that have come through occasionally. They're not the main users, but.
We don't have a deal with other people and we don't wanna recommend because a system like ours, Valance can only handle so much. And we've had people entertain the thought of bringing septic tank pumpers from Clive Falls because it's so expensive over there. They thought they could haul it to Lakeview at the point when we were only charging a penny a gallon. That's pretty cheap.
What's our current rate?
Uh, it depends on, on what it is, but it's two to three.
Dollars?
Cents.
Cents per gallon?
Yeah. So how many gallons have we been dumping, do you think? We, we, we probably average about twelve to fifteen thousand gallons a month.
So that's roughly two hundred and forty dollars on the low end.
And then I think we could get away with five or six cents a gallon, so we're done averaging twelve.
That would take six hundred and sixty-six months to fill. Good to five years. That rate, I mean, that's the math. So.
At, at decent.
At that, and that's at twelve thousand. I was at two cents.
So we had twelve thousand at six.
So that would quadruple in five years.
I, I think you could, I think it would be around fifteen cents, I think.
Well, I. You know, is it somewhere near ten, ten cents?
I, I don't really know, but, I mean. You gotta do something.
Fifteen cents is, fifteen cents is twenty-two fifty. Two thousand four hundred fifty dollars a month, but.
You're going that high, Tom?
Well, I, I would look at Clive and that for six to twelve.
I would too, I also, I would rather stagger or pay an increase instead of hit them all at once, because I, they're just gonna carry on as a customer. And, I mean, you think about. Which I, I mean, I mean, I think the rates are low. I've rented blue rooms, things like that. The rates are low to me. But anybody who has them in a business, paragone, whatever, I mean, that's a huge jump in one year. So, you know, I would rather stagger it, if, I mean, but at the same time, we have to make it payable itself.
Septic tanks are a thousand gallons of blue room, it's thirty.
Yeah. So what'd you say, fifteen cents?
Fifteen cents, twelve thousand, I believe, yeah.
I think ten would be the highest number probably.
But they're pumping water since right now.
It'd be twelve hundred dollars a month, they all.
I'm gonna.
Cause they can't, they can't put a septic system out there.
So then, we're gonna take them out. We're gonna lose it over here.
So we're going roughly two hundred and forty dollars a month for twelve hundred.
Isn't there a question about what zone this is?
Yeah.
It would take eleven years to pan off.
That's why we brought you in, Janine, to ask you about a lux taken from this location for the dumps.
Let's make sure that I know that we're talking, which.
That location right up there.
The, which project is it? Is this the town's?
This is the home base.
Okay, this isn't Red Rocks.
No, no.
This is the one that people complained about on, on Third and S.
Oh, I see man with the idea that we're talking about the Red Rock property. And that project. Let me go check. I'll be right back.
And, and eleven years is, you know, no interest. I mean, that's just, what, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Right.
Well, it's all kind of.
Yeah, it's coming out of sewer, out of sewer ponds.
And the, um, that a ten year, a ten to eleven year is normally an improvement like this, that's a normal maintenance schedule. That's what Red Rocks doing for their sewer equipment that they're doing with us. That seems to be kind of the, the normal amortization as far as this flavor of improvement.
And, and you, and how is it in our.
It all ends up back in the system eventually anyway. What's the problem? It's like, well, why?
How much do you have in reserve? Just the sewer function for it, for sure.
It would be nice to have the option to use other, I mean, have other or more. What, what would be our max capacity on this? For dumping per month?
The chemicals in the blue rooms are where you get into a massive.
The issues, yeah.
Some pumping septic tanks, you can take, you know.
Lot more.
They can be lining up down the street.
So I think one of the main things we need to get to is updating that fee schedule. Cause we can say, oh, we're gonna do this. We already have said we're gonna do this.
No, we only, we only have two customers, as you've already mentioned, for that.
But you guys have talked about septic only. You're not doing the blue stuff. You guys, would you guys want another? Let's say somebody, it was, did make sense for somebody to climb it, even at that higher rate. Is that something you guys wanna encourage if it's only septic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Normally, you don't have any control over, they could dump chemicals or.
Okay, then there you go. That's kind of the.
I heard we've had, we've had lots of capacity there, so I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't be opposed to.
What about Alteris? We're more Alteris.
Yeah, the, the problem, the, the problem that they're having is they can't trust the other, Lady Sanitation McLeese.
Understandable.
They can trust to do what they're telling them to do. Problem is, if you've got an outside outfit that you're not gonna have that good relationship with.
Probably someone's fertilizer tank or a pesticide tank or something that can really.
Well, you would sign an agreement. I mean, you would have to, and then when they dump, you go test right after. I mean, there's gotta be ways to regulate that, but that's a huge asset, doesn't it, we could utilize? I mean, I know it's more work in the beginning, but then. It's super gross, I know. It pays.
Well, we can decide that.
With our two regular customers, it's really easy to make sure that there's nothing we don't want in our system, because it's a balance.
It's a balance.
It takes one load for a lot of things. Pesticide.
You mean seventy, how many doses, ninety dollars?
How many do you use?
Dump food.
Hopefully nobody else.
Right, that's what I just, like, well, we're at, we just got back from camping, so.
Janine's back in here with your book. I guess that makes more sense why we were so okay with it continuing to happen on Third. You know.
Well, and we still have to, so we don't have to go through planning at all, but. And I guess I assume I not do it. I would still like to notify the, the neighbors. Just because it's like that transparency setting or not.
No, no.
There's like one.
Uh, actually, they don't live there, obviously.
Oh, they don't?
H Street. So, yeah, I mean, if, if you're okay with it, I mean, I just, I just had the town council say, let's get that fee schedule, put it on the agenda, let's look at it. Any other representative source, but. It needs to be updated. We, we know.
Absolutely.
The next time we talk about it, it's something like when we last filmed, you know, we'll realize, you know, some people just need to be updated more.
I mean, twelve years.
But when it went up, another fifty-six thousand, I couldn't figure out why so much more.
Completely different pro.
It makes sense.
Even at seven cents, a gallon, at twelve thousand gallons on the low end, you could be paid off in fifteen years, which is normal, right? So.
Well, really, you can just talk about their version.
That's not possible.
But there's very few living parts, so it's very, very simple. It should be super available.
Yeah.
There's not much to go wrong with it.
Wish we knew more information about why it went up fifty thousand. I mean, I assume more, but.
Just before you off the.
Oh. I assume it's the site. It's the site, yeah.
I guess, okay, so we need, need a consensus on, on the ups or?
Need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, vote. In a work session.
It's not a session, it's a real good session, but yeah.
Special session.
It's a real session, so it, it is a.
And I need, I need a motion on this then. To change this work order.
I'll make the motion to approve change order number one for all this.
Okay, I have a motion on the second.
Second.
Motion made in second, open favor.
Aye.
Move on down. Red Rock Cooling. Geothermal extension breakdown. After removal of the.
Thank you.
Geothermal extension on it. Drop it down to one, two, one point six instead of one point nine.
Well, this, this was your original last one, that was you.
Yeah, I think so.
And this didn't include the return of the steam?
That is correct.
So that's why we're.
And then you include this, that was just Red Rocks portion. We added the, we added the return of the steam line. We added that culvert too, we talked about a little bit on the waste. Those, those bid items would be paid for by the town. And culvert, they weren't, they not a part of Red Rocks, it's lost, it was.
So is everybody up to date with what Red Rock was saying? You know, today, I mean, Jeff Mantra on the column, what he said.
Right.
And that's why this is really the rap, like, it's, it's not a reliable source that he thinks it's gonna be helpful to the town.
You have to fill me in.
So, so Red Rock monthly call, Jeff Mantra, I present for Red Rock, says that. This steam really, it's not a viable source for heating. I'm trying to. Use the, uh, potential uses. Can have any demand, continuous demand, and so. There was a lot more to the conversation, but he definitely gave, you know, strong caution to us to.
I also personally talked, I actually called Mr. Mayor and I've talked to him a little bit. And he suggested if you guys did wanna look at this, it would obviously be more expensive later on to reopen the hole, to put that in if you did. But wait a year, see what Red Rock actually looks like after they've been operational. And at that point then, look at funding sources. You guys have been great writing grants between Michelle and Daryl. And do that with a customer, and maybe you can do it with a customer mind and everything else at that point. So that would be the.
Well, that makes sense, cause then you're gonna know your temperatures and.
Exactly.
The temperature getting and everything else.
Yeah.
The other, the other concern that he had too is you gotta remember, that plant has to go down for, that's not like a geothermal well where, you know, I mean, we obviously go down for maintenance and stuff like that occasionally. But that type of plant, I mean, there's inspections that get shut down for, there's, there's just up and down, just natural with their industrial process. So even if they do have a good head of steam, it is. And he said, he has had very, he has worked on a lot of these projects, and he said that waste heat is difficult to deal with as far as, um, it just, there's just complications to it. It's something that's chased really often, sometimes works out, sometimes doesn't. And so not no, and they, and they would provide it to us if we wanted it, but he can't make area guarantees until he knows what that process is actually going to look like.
Well, now that my hesitation investment, quarter of my dollars, I mean, we're talking about the first ever Red Rock in the United States, so there's a lot of steps to it. We don't even timeline wise know where we're at.
Well, it, it, no, it hasn't taken a while to get bugs out of it.
Exactly, so I think that, you know, it wasn't worth the investment, in my opinion, but.
When you guys, your, your, um, motion on bid approval for Morello was conditional, so you can excise that part if you guys decide to do so. Red Rock understands that they, they're, and we just need to get, we need to get that oral agreement in writing and amend that agreement. And remember, that agreement is amenable because we kind of anticipated things could change. But also, he's, he just said right off the bat, he's not surprised that the bids were, this is what they're seeing, all the stuff they're dealing with because of production delays and everything with COVID nineteen. So.
So what was the culvert cost in that, so I don't have the.
The culvert?
Yeah.
Fifty-one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
It was just fifty-one hundred?
And that's something we need, correct, Daryl?
I see it.
Yes.
So.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, we don't have much choice, we've got. We did say pending more information on the steam.
Right.
Yeah, we can delete that.
Yeah.
In fact, you basically even do it inside if you wanted to. You basically make a motion to, to delete that part of the bid.
Twenty, items twenty through twenty-three.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Items twenty through twenty-two.
Are being deleted?
There would need to be a motion on that first.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion? To delete section twenty through twenty-three?
So the, the bid has already been awarded.
Correct.
Pending, yeah.
It was a conditional.
It did not, but it was on.
All we need now is to just.
Say yes or no.
That portion of it.
Remove.
Items twenty through twenty-three.
Remove those four items.
The new was up there was awarded with a conditional award.
So I'll make a motion to amend the approval to Morello for the, this bid, renewing items twenty through twenty-three.
I'll say that.
Motion made in second, open favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open pose?
And obviously folks, the, this is a head side note. The bid is also conditional on Morello until we have, Red Rocks, you guys also made an addition on Red Rock, rip, rip approval of the amounts.
Yes, cause they're.
For the, for, for the higher amount, correct?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we have to amend along for under eighty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, we have to amend the loan for under eighty-six thousand dollars.
So, there's a few steps, but we will bring that back to council for.
So, who's doing that? Who would be writing from Red Rock, is that? The contractor signed, we've got a pre-work next week, so. Are we gonna get, are we gonna get an approval back from Red Rock?
I think what we would need to do is do a mutual amendment of that prior contract with our service fee. They orally approved, but I think next, I think we, if we can just get that, if we have the amount, you give me the exact amount, correct? And I think we just do, I just, we send an amendment to the one section of the contract with service fee.
We anticipate there being change orders also, can we include it, the, the long amounting in that Red Rock portion that they would be paying would cover any change order? So that we're not stuck trying to amend this in the future, but that we're in a certain percentage, you know, if it's.
There's some contingency in the contract, but I, I apologize, they don't have.
Hundred and thirty-three thousand.
I think they follow the.
I actually hope so.
I mean, that's thirteen.
Wrong.
So, you think it should follow the map?
There's only a lot of amendments.
No, I know, that's what I'm just.
We got a heck of a time, first time. It was a little easy. We had a loan for three and fifty thousand dollars, and then we get amended for another one point six, so, you know. That's set up a lot of red flags, so I only wanna send this more amendment than once. Don't be grumpy enough about that.
But it is explainable, because again, the bids were the bids, so.
All the time, it'll be cheap with them.
Let's move on down to the last item. Sunshine Children Center, um, it's only fifty, no, I, three options here on this. We've been approached by the county, you know, we could lease it to them, we wanted to go in and remodel it and use it for the step-up kids that, uh, from the school. Because they're having problems with the, the lot of bullying and, uh, other things going on towards those kids. Or sell it to the hospital, or to keep it, um, I wasn't too sure if we could actually sell it, because it was given to the town.
And I reviewed, um, back in two thousand and fifteen, um, Lake County Mental Health, when they were a civil county entity, um, made at least oral solicitation to purchase the building for eighty thousand and some change. It kind of died on the vine, because that's kind of the time when Lake County Mental Health had transitioned over to Lake District Hospital, the, you know, the commissioners discontinued it, and everything kind of was transitioned in that direction. Um, but that is the original deed, and that deed is completely unconditional, there are no, that would have had to have been reserved in the deed itself, so it was a full, it was a full donation. So, the town, subject to the public hearing process, like we did for the sewer plant property, you know, for selling the property or something along those lines, you having a full-blown public hearing. Has full rights to surplus it, keep it, sell it, whatever, that, that grant was unconditional as far as I can review, so, from the Lake County Youth Club, back in nineteen seventy-two, so.
Well, that's good news for the town.
Yep.
Um, not necessarily a condition for those who want it. I, I too have talked with commissioners about, specifically about Charlie, talking to him from the hospital, and I'd like to, um, Charlie, speak to this matter if you'd like, if you've just heard Wes, and just kind of what your proposal might be for it, so the whole town, council could hear it.
Sure.
What I've looked at, I haven't been in the building, I don't think, in seven, eight, nine years, but at that time, when it was the Sunshine Daycare Center, of course, it did not pass fire marshals, um, or the ADA compliance issue. So, those that wanna put kids in there, it's probably not a good idea, Daryl put in that ramp to the basement, but I don't know if you did anything with the bathrooms, are they ADA compliant?
I don't think any work was done on those.
No, yeah, last thing here, it was not ADA compliant legally, you can use it for children until you have an ADA-needed person, then at that point, you really have to address it per the state childcare licensing.
Perfect, well, I have a hope that we never get a child that needs ADA requirements, but, um, frankly, what I was thinking of doing is, um, use it for our business office until such time as we could. I think we need to get a daycare center in this community that is available for the public, that would not, uh, that would act in support of, uh, Head Start. But be available for people that don't qualify for Head Start studies. If that were the case, then I would think that that place would be a great location to build an acceptable facility, rather than try to remodel it. I think there's been a lot of attempts to try and figure out how to use the building as it is, and unless I'm completely mistaken, uh, Daryl's idea of putting that ramp was a helpful use for the basement. And it didn't get kids to the second, to the ground floor or next floor up.
I worked at that building for the last period of time that it was open, as the director of the YMCA.
And did, did it function well for kids?
Yeah, I never had any issues with it whatsoever, and the ramp downstairs did work, and it was ADA-approved at the time.
My understanding, a lot of that was grandfathered, the problem is, it stopped operating, and that's where, that's where you end up with the problem, where once it stops, you're.
It has to be redone.
You have to bring it up to code.
You have to bring it up to code, and that's, that's the current issue with the, with that building as.
So what, what they told me, when I went down there with them, the, the upper part, you'd have to find some way for the lift, or ramp would not work, 'cause the ramp would end up at the start, or out there at the curb. To be the right pitch and the right length, that's what contractors and, um, the fire marshal. And then, yeah, no, let me repeat, the bathrooms are not ADA-approved, none of them, top and bottom. The downstairs, it may have made a ramp, but as far as going outside and even upstairs, they can't use the stairs over a certain height. So you'd have to put ramps in there in order to get to the right height for ADA, or even use it for, uh, a daycare.
Correct.
So, the only way in and out of that for ADA is that one set of ramps. Otherwise, you'd have to go there and tear out that whole set of steps and redo that where they could go out the back.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I, I talked to some folks too, same difference, and that's, you're, you were exactly mirroring what I'd heard about the building, that's the, those are the limitations as its current configuration. And that's why ADA stuff, that's why people try to keep these in operation so long, is because once you lose that grandfather status, it can be very onerous too.
It does have a brand-new fire alarm system, and it don't work so easy.
True.
Night fire marshal said the fire alarm system was good.
So how many, if you were to put offices in there, how many parking spots would you need, 'cause I know parking's kind of always been a concern over there.
I don't, I haven't been inside to even measure, I don't even know what the square footage is, um, you do have street parking, you have some parking up front, but you certainly. Uh, we have between thirteen and fifteen people that we could put in an office, I don't know how many right now, many are working from home. Uh, what I don't know is how much longer, the idea of working from home sounds great, do you have to do it? And especially if you have kids that think that, um, working from home means you just get to be home mom, that doesn't mean you work, well, that isn't how it works. So I'm sort of anticipating that those that are able to work from home, that in the near future will not be the case. And I've been looking for a location, that's the reason why I thought it might be useful for now, but truthfully, if this were to be a daycare center, we certainly, I have looked for, in, at many buildings. For converting into a daycare center, 'cause this community needs one, we need one at the hospital, the school needs one.
I thought the DMS was gonna do, the old DMS was gonna have a daycare center, but it didn't.
I, I think there's, I think there's lots and lots of ideas on what to do, but I don't think that anybody's found a good location yet. What makes this location close to the park, uh, makes it a nice location, doesn't have a lot of parking, which is a problem. But everything that we pick in town doesn't have a lot of parking, so no matter what we do, that space is gonna, any space is gonna be a problem for parking. But if you find a place that has great parking, uh, you don't have close to a park, it's a trade-off.
Well, then that's from the backside of that, it's all brass now, it's not probably a play on, you could come out and park it back there.
And I don't know if you can take that in the back, back here, could you Jeff, make parking back there?
You can park back there.
If you can, but I don't know, you know, you've got an alleyway, you can drive it up and down.
There's a lot of things that clipping to.
You have to keep it clear, that's the difference.
You can't park that.
And RVs park that.
You can't park ducts in the alley.
Yeah.
So you guys consider purchase of it, I, you know, we talked before.
It gets to be a tricky thing, if we were to buy the building and then push it over, because frankly, after a couple of years, then that, is that, what I have to look at, is that good use of district funds? We're a public entity, and we wanna be as prudent as we can be with district funds. I don't know, the other organizations might have a great deal of cash that they could, um, give for this. I, I wouldn't be interested in spending a lot of money on it, just because from a, from a prudent standpoint, if we're, if we really wanna find a daycare center location that would be reasonable distance. Anything that we would buy, we'd spend a lot of money on just to push it over, or as a former commissioner once said, learn to burn, might be a great opportunity.
Be a great place to do a burn.
But either way, I don't see it as having a building of enormous value, in my view. That's, that's good.
They had to put most of our money into a new structure.
I'd, I'd like to entertain the idea of what potential income we use it for on an ongoing basis, you know, such as a lease, not just, you know, sell it. But obviously, whoever leases it, they're gonna have to put some money in.
Well, that's what I'm at, and I talked about also is that, uh, they would go in and do the work on it, county would.
I think maybe the county and the hospital should put proposals together, let their council on it, and let us look at it and go from that on it.
And, and also, we also need to put it out to the public, maybe there's parties involved that don't even know we're entertaining that idea, and there's someone else, um, that somebody else wants to use it for and, and use it.
What, what is it that the county plans on doing? Or was thinking of doing?
They thought to put their step-up kids there, their alternative school there.
And where, where is that currently?
It's currently in the DNS building, and they didn't want it on campus, before it's been at other locations such as just north of, of the senior center. They, they moved from that location, um, on campus, and they don't wanna be on campus. I have, we, the school board itself has not talked about that, I won't say that right now, um, I think internally, um, discussions have, probably Michael Carter started that discussion with, um, Mark Albertson, Commissioner Albertson. But I was, I was involved in that discussion, and the school even talked about this at all, this location.
In, in, in Michael Carter's defense, he's pretty new, he may not realize what the status of the building is or the condition of the building.
Who runs step-up, is that the county or the school district?
School.
But the, the county, from what Mark was saying, is that they'd be willing, you know, part of their programs to do, you know, maintenance and all that kind of stuff.
That's why I think they should all put proposals together.
Yeah.
And I think, I think also, I think, uh, the hospital and the county needs to go through there and take a look and get an idea. You know, I've been in it several times with Jeff, and it needs a lot of work.
Should we show it to a Realtor?
You know, well, I, I actually do think we need to market value on this building, because if, if we're really talking about, you know, a long-time lease, or, or, you know, a, a sale, or.
Yeah, either way, we need to figure out what the market value is.
If you guys would like, I, we got a broker price opinion the last time on the Red Rock property, and I can get the same thing, that is a valid, we don't need a full-blown real estate appraisal, BPO would be adequate to get. Which obviously you'd have to get a Realtor to go in there and get comps, take a look at kind of what's there, just in general, and it can be, I'm comfortable with any of the local Realtors that are available doing it.
I, I've never paid one though, I will say that was a shock to me. And I've been in real estate for a long time, I've never paid one, so I, I might.
We generally, we generally do it here just because of, as a, it's something we do, and 'cause again, we're, let's win a list with them, or something along those lines. It's something like, it's kind of, it's been pretty standard practice for us, we, evaluation's done.
Can we, I mean, we only have what, two, three?
Really?
Brokers, we'll call and, and bear, you know, ask them all that, you know, if they're recharging a lot.
It's prime location, that's probably one of the best locations I can think of.
A lot of different things, yeah.
Also just as a home, I mean, I mean, we've got a shortage obviously of homes right now.
Are you interested?
Not anymore.
I'm never interested in any of them.
Do you have any idea how big it is on?
I don't, I'll take three thousand, did you remember?
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred.
It might be a little bit bigger, but also, I don't know, I think, I don't know. I have an opinion, and I don't, I'm not saying it right now, on some things that need to be looked at. Well, and that's fire, because we were, oh, yeah, but it doesn't, yeah, I mean, well, I can tell you that the fuel tank is out of there, that nobody knew was in there. Um, the other areas when the roof collapsed has been fixed, and that's up to date.
Yeah, there's, there's some areas in the bottom basement where the ceiling's fallen out.
Yeah, it's standing underneath.
Some issue.
So we need to definitely have another, uh, work session, or I guess discussion, special session.
Well, let's, uh.
But we need to get the broker price.
Let's see what, what the Realtors come up with.
And then have the hospital, we've done that, so we got.
Yeah.
I would like to see it go out to the public, information as well, I mean, often there's people who looking for stuff that they just don't know, and that's what people get upset about, is when they, they find out after the fact. Because we didn't put it out there, and I didn't know it was for sale, I mean, we're, we're looking for money, we're looking for competitive, no offense, but, offer, you know, like. The more, the more bidding, the better.
Public funds, we have to do what we need to do.
Is it its own residential?
Yes, its own residential, lastly, I don't, I'm not really, my mind's, I'm not sure, were you guys on the council when the last time we talked about this was, folks that did wanna turn it into a preschool daycare kind of thing?
They were trying to get it, that was very beginning.
So we talked about ADA, and they, they wanted us to, you know, take care of the costs up front, but it was really only presented to, yeah, like just one, one, because it came out.
Oh, I would have came in, Bailey was here, that Sarah.
You weren't on council then, but I was very familiar with that, yeah.
Yeah, I remember the word, and that's why I think.
There was four total that we're looking at it, yeah.
And that's, that's why I think any of them, and that's why full public awareness.
They couldn't afford it because of the cost of what it was gonna cost to get it fixed and the ramps and everything else, you're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars for just the ramp alone.
What, uh.
That's insane.
What, um, what it cost to heat that?
It was.
There's three monitors in there?
Four, for the winter, for one month, it was over a thousand bucks, we paid about thirteen forty a month. And that was just for monitor, and electricity, electricity was about four fifty. I would just like to see it go out, people know that we're looking at either leasing or selling, yeah, well, but we're talking about potential leasers even, you know.
Leasing, we're not.
Well, when they see the paper, when they see the, the, they'll, they'll get it to, to.
Yeah, like, and then, then we can kind of go from there, and we definitely got regular broker price opinion, and decided we wanna make some money on the long term. Decide if we wanna make some money on the long term, or sell it and wash our hands of it all. I mean, that's obviously extra work for, and people just need to understand.
Yeah, it's a trading board to just set a deteriorate rate.
Yeah, we, we need to do something.
Yeah, we've discussed it, and then things went down, I can handle that.
And if you guys want to, you can also, to get the public hearing requirement settled, if you guys decide to sell it or whatever, you can put in your public hearing notice, any proposed sale that has to go public hearing first before you, at a, at a prior meeting before you would approve something. You guys can put it, publish a public hearing notice in the newspaper that we're looking at leasing, selling. Just have the notice cover all potential uses, and then that way, you have a whole presentation, the public hearing goes forward, and then you kind of make your, what direction you're kind of going as far as. But they would have to have, but again, you need to be, you would need to make sure people are organized for that. You find a need to make sure you really disclose the all potential options and prices.
So we'll go to, uh,
We have, we have a council meeting next week, and I'm not sure what all's on the council.
Yeah, we'll table this. So you have council on the thirteenth, you have a work session on the fourteenth.
It'll probably take a couple of weeks.
Because they're gonna have to put together a proposal, these other agencies as well.
Till the end of the month.
And you need, and you need to publish the week before. So your public hearing audit would need to end with the new examiner guidelines. Your deadline for the examiner hearing would be that Thursday of the week before. And you have to post the week before the meeting, so what, fifteenth, I think is your drop dead deadline for this month to get it on in the last meeting, if, cuz of having to have, you know, publication before then, so.
So do we announce it on the fifteenth, and then we have it?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're ready to, until you get the proposals, I'm not sure you're ready to. That's part of the
We're gonna have to, this'll probably be next month.
But it would be nice to, you know, put some notice out there, so the lawyers can.
Why don't we wait till November?
We could do the November tenth meeting.
I don't really know. Take our decisions. But in the meantime, you have published something, and say, you'd like entertain any option.
Well, that's
And it gives more time to do all that.
Yeah, put something in paper like that.
Yeah, cuz Michelle said she could put it in on the fifteenth, and then it would give that much time where it was already put in there a month early, almost.
Well, and again, you don't have to do the full-blown hearing notice, which you could do, just an ad, a request for proposal, just an ad, we're interested in
And the simple three thousand dollar WiseBuy's ad too, just saying, hey, are you interested in leasing or owning the Sunshine Center?
Well, I put it in the WiseBuy, the newspaper, I put it in that little yellow blue form that comes out.
The lowdown.
Yeah, that thing.
I said WiseBuy, I didn't say it.
Yeah, it'll get put on there, and it'll get put on Facebook, type.
Okay.
So we'll table that to, um,
November tenth, maybe.
November tenth?
Just wait till November.
We're gonna table it to November tenth. But I'll, and I'll put it in the paper. Does everybody agree with the tenth?
Anybody have anything else? Nope. Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn the special session at, uh, five thirty-two.